Now we've been down about ninety-five hundred customers, uh, ninety thousand a week and it's left to be done, hopefully should be done by this time tomorrow. That's not a complete fore, but that's what we have to do at this point in time.
Thank you for coming, Reverend. We have no reports of special committees this evening, so we will move to the public forum. I believe, I think there's about fourteen speakers. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, so that everyone has a chance to share. And the first speaker is Governor Larry Rice.
In front of you, each one of you can receive a letter, and that letter's a reference to the fact that we want to make available ground to St. Louis County to open the shelter. When you make a statement that you want to open a shelter for the homeless, it's sincere, but I think the problem is if we're waiting on the federal government to provide the money, the problems they have, we're going to be waiting a long time. And that's why I talked to our board of directors, and they agreed to make available two lots on Leyton Avenue, and it's thirty-nine fifty, uh, matter Avenue, it's on the natural bridge, in an unincorporated area. My vision for that is, is a shelter that goes for women from twenty-five to thirty-five women and children. It would be based one, just since I mentioned that, it's been interesting, I, out of the blue, had the elder one contracting, Missouri Van Nenekle contract, since then he now put up a roof on such a shelter. And I believe that there are other groups out there that would do that. So, in order to really get this moving, I believe that we're going to have to just go to the general public and ask them to do their part, and I think that we can get this built. That'd be the first one. The second one we have in vision is one that's needed for men from St. Louis County, there were coming fifty to seventy-five men. And just real quickly, is that by being an all-night shelter like we are, fourteen-level locusts, we're under a tremendous amount of pressure at the present time. I have not seen a summer where we've had so many homeless women, children, and men, veterans, coming in at this time. It's putting a lot of pressure on the downtown businesses, on the neighbors, on our work as a whole. So we definitely need to have St. Louis County do this, and we're going to help any way we can.
Well, thank you, Reverend, and I, I would like to say just thank you, not only for myself, but as a member of this council, because I think you are aware that this is very important to me. But the issue has been trying to locate someplace to put a shelter, and the county has, because they've been looking in my council district, so I know there has been research done on this, and it has been difficult, it's been expensive. What we think we could use has turned out to be way, way more than we can afford. So I, I could applaud you on being willing to come forward with the location. And I assume, Mr. County Executive, is there someone you should be talking to?
Well, we would look at Twitter, and we see, by the way, there's phone numbers in here, you can contact, you can get that, you know, we got our attorneys in touch with our attorneys, and we can do whatever we can.
All right, thank you very much.
May I make a brief announcement of the development in my area?
Yes.
If anybody's here from the sixth district and is planning to speak this evening, I want to let you know that I'm hosting a town hall meeting. Subject matter of that town hall meeting is the residential senior development that is located on Telegraph Road. I'm having this meeting on June seventh, Friday, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, at Oak Hill High School, in the main auditorium, the main gym. And look forward to seeing you there, and certainly if you have comments tonight, that's very fine as well. I just wanted to make you aware of that meeting.
All right, thank you. The next speaker is Barbara McCain, Can, and after Barbara will be Virginia King.
How is I in July? And I was originally from Fleming. I owned a home, and I'm just saying that there are no places for getting help in county if you lose your home, or whatever. If you have children, you have nowhere to take them, you have women's families, uh, it's just, it's just real hard for these women to come all the way away from their neighborhoods, from people they know. And, you know, when these women come into the city, from the county, they're scared. It's a totally different way of life, the city is from the county. And it's not fair to them that there is no place to take them if they need to. And I just think, you know, that they should consider that, you know, these people, you know, I mean, from the county, they need help, you know, instead of having to drag their children all the way to the city, they get taken away from their schools, you know, it's just a totally different way of life for them, and it's very unfair to the children that there's no place to take them. Thank you. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Sorry, I, what I want to say, I'm going to make a statement. The statement you're indicating there's no place in the county for people to go, that's not true. They may be filled, but there are places to go in St. Louis County, just like there are places to go in the city of St. Louis that are filled as well. Now, there's not enough places, that's a fact, but I do want to be clear, there are places in St. Louis County where families can go that are homeless, but I'm not saying that they're not filled, but there are places to go. You made the statement, there is no place to go in St. Louis County.
I understand all that.
I'm just saying that's not a true statement.
Well, and part of the problem is, is because they're, they're over, there's too many, there's, yes. So, thank you for your comment. Uh, Virginia King, and then Candace Fox.
Thank you for taking my comments, Virginia. I found out you're totally proud of all this, despite before. I'm a victim, I was staying in a basement shelter that was provided to me free, because I'm a breast cancer survivor relocating back home to St. Louis and hoping for a job. And the process of having this blessing given to me, here comes the flood, and I have about maybe ten, eleven ounces of muddy water in my window, flooding in, flooding my apartment, and even after the flood and the rain and storms are over, the place is too rusty, nasty, stinky, dangerous to live in, and I'm trying to find a place to go. And if there's a place to go, and nobody could find it, I was told to come to St. Louis. So, I'm for one, I'm coming to, I'm coming here actually to, I'm honored, because I couldn't find me a place to cover, it's supposed to be a place I could find. And I was definitely in need of more shelters out there, and I think that anybody can help, you know, especially women, children, men, it doesn't matter, people with medical conditions such as myself, you know. If it wasn't for my doctors at Barnes here in, you know, in St. Louis and stuff, I wouldn't have even chose from here, I probably would have had to go to a different place even farther off. But I just want to thank you for the time, and hope that you do, um, that you do what we have to do, because it's something that's definitely in our.
May I ask, are you from Jefferson County? Or is it Jefferson County?
I was originally from St. Louis.
But you live in Jefferson County?
But I was given a, a free, well, not free, a loan basement apartment to stay in while I see temporary, uh, how, oh, while I see county in appointment because of my medical condition. I've been sick as long, no, to, I didn't have a problem from. And in any case, in the process of staying there, as one of the tornadoes and the storms hit, and I found myself with nowhere to go, you know, I moved back to the former, so I'm originally from St. Louis, like I said, and I haven't known, I haven't known where to go. I'm scared, you know, I don't know what to do. I mean, I see these people out here in the street, they're hooded by trees, you know, in alleys, and, and public places, but there's no place for them to go. And it made me scared that I was going to mind it like that. I've never had to live like that in my life, and, you know, I can't believe that I'm going to this now, but I'm grateful for the shelter, and I pray to God that, you know, that you seek to provide more shelters out there for people like me and others. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Candace Fox, and then Carolyn Clay.
I'm not homeless, I've never been homeless in my life. I used to drive trucks all the way, and I got sick in the hospital. Now, there, I called the shelters out of county, that were, or called the numbers that they told me to call, and everyone said, oh, we're full, we're full, we're full. The hospital ended up, it couldn't be attacked, they sent me down to the city. That's not a drill, they just put people in taxes, and sent them down to local exchanges, et cetera. And we tried, we needed something to react to, because, to women and children, they come down there, up high, their kids, they get there, they get scared, they have nowhere to go, and the people are just, Mr. Ripley, they don't know what to do. There's a lot of people there, and the homeless aren't violent or anything like that, they just don't know where to go, and they need a place to go. This has to fail, this has to be drafted, we need it. So, every sin in the hearts, you know, to build a few shelters for more shelters out there, so that people can go to, and more, I appreciate it. Thank you.
May I ask a statement? But I, I guess I seem to have listened certain that the government agencies in the greater metropolitan area all are, operate a shelter, and that's not true, none of them do. None of the government agencies that I know of in the area operate a permanent shelter. I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying none does, on a twenty-four hour seven days a week basis, none does. So, I'm just saying, and not just in St. Louis County, it is St. Charles County, the city of St. Louis, it's Jefferson County, Franklin County, none of the counties operate a permanent shelter. So I want to be clear about that, so, so I'm not saying that St. Louis County is some, a county unto itself that we don't know why we're not doing it, no. None of the government agencies operate a permanent shelter anyplace in greater metropolitan area, to my knowledge.
And I want to say, Reverend Runge, one of the things that you need to build some more out there, to have people go to, and that everyone wants to warm to the city, because out of county, they, you, all places, and they tell you, four, 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 and then they send them all downtown, and then downtown will be a four, and then that's when you have nowhere to go. You need to only need more shelters out there.
One of the things that we're looking at here is, quite frankly, is looking at, what with existing facilities, to expand those services, if that's possible. We don't want to reinvent the wheel, we just want to provide the service.
True.
That's one thing we're looking at, is how can we expand it, not reinvent it, not build a new building, but existing services, how can we, partly for those who are good, for those not for profit, that is actually doing the work, and have the expertise to do it, and that part of the building is worth it.
Thank you. Carolyn Clay, and then Tracy Addison.
Um, I'm working in the office, I worked in the office since nineteen ninety, and, uh, I worked, I started in the office, worked in the accounting office for about a year, and quickly out of there. I had another plan. I, uh, ended up, I opened a women's shelter, and I seen a lot of women, a lot of children, and they came to me, they said, there is me, that is a big me. Uh, we don't want you to, uh, create that, but we don't. We just, we, we, we want an emergency shelter, because we get a lot of calls, the calls from people that have just passed through. I had a call from this woman, and she called me on the phone, I don't know how she got through, I'm not sure. She was on Highway Seventy. I said, where are you at on Highway Seventy? I said, get to a, a service station. So she went to the service station, I said, I had to talk her through that thing, she was so scared, she said somebody had, had stole her money, that she was out in St. Louis County, on Highway Seventy, and she was, well, she was in St. Charles, she was in St. Charles, and she went to Fifth Street. I talked to the cashier, and I said, she's trying to get to the lots. We're talking about an emergency shelter, we're talking about an emergency shelter, shelter that would be open for people to come in anytime. That's what we're talking about. Not the shelter you call the eight oh two five four four number, and they say, no, hold on, I called it. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an open door for people to come when they're sick and have nowhere to go, have no medical insurance, have no, no type of insurance, and through these floods, no riddle insurance, their house has been condemned, they lost their job, with nowhere to go. Where they come, they come to the lots. I tell them, call, call at eight o'clock, call at two o'clock, call at six o'clock. They come back to me, and they say they called, I said, go over there and sit at the, at eight hundred North Tucker. And they come back to us with children, with nowhere to go. But we, we, we take them in. I know their price is not the best, but he is an advocate for people being on the street. I've seen it. I wouldn't lie to you, wouldn't lie to none of you. I've seen it. I thank you. I thank you for your hearts of compassion. I thank you for this one nation, you say one nation under God. The God I serve is a God of love and compassion and mercy. That's the God we should be serving, is one nation under God.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Tracy Addison?
Pass.
I'm sorry, pass. Uh, Jennifer, is it Jennifer Bird?
Yes.
Hang on, are you Jennifer Bird?
Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Bird's coming, she's just slower.
Yes.
Are you Jennifer?
I am.
All right.
Thank you for taking my comments. Um, I have concerns about this bill one oh three, and it's on page seventeen of your agenda here. It's, uh, authorizing and directing the county executive to execute to deliver an intergovernmental cooperation with the economic council of St. Louis County, the city of St. Louis, and St. Louis Corporation, concerning combination of existing SLC and SDC, business development, business finance, entrepreneurial services, and so forth. This smells like City County merger to me. I have very, very serious concerns about this. Uh, I'm just curious why we think we need to combine these two entities with, specifically the relation of business. Uh, I don't know if you're aware, I hope that you are, because I know that City County record is on the minds of this council, that there is a report, um, it's a hundred ninety-six pages, I'm hopeful that you all read it, I would like to ask you if you have read it, I think that it's an important, uh, tool, it's been a tool for me, but there are a number of things that I'd like to highlight here. Uh, let's see, on page six of the City of St. Louis and City, St. Louis County Intergovernmental Collaboration Study from February sixteen of two thousand and eleven, done by the PFM Group, um, out of Pennsylvania. Page six reads, economic development, there is across the country a growing acceptance of the need to, excuse me, the need for jurisdictional competition to be replaced by cooperation for economic development. I beg to differ. Um, competitions for excellence, competition is what gets some people into better colleges than others. Competition also produces more results, and it produces good behavior, and it encourages low cost. So cooperation is great, but this isn't kumbaya, this is a free market system. So I think that that needs to be considered. Um, in this report, it's filled with a lot of information that, I mean, we're looking at budgets from St. Louis County compared to St. Louis City, for things like, well, let's just say take, take parks and recreation, for example, and you can find that on page seventy-three of this report. Uh, we've got the city of St. Louis with thirty-two hundred acres of parks and land to maintain in a budget of thirty-three million dollars. That comes out to ten thousand, three hundred dollars a year per acre for maintenance, versus what the county spends, and so I'd like to say thank you for doing a good job on this, twelve thousand acres, so almost four times the acreage of the city, and a budget of twenty-six point three million for maintenance, so that comes out to just almost twenty-two hundred dollars a year per acre for maintenance. I think it's critical that we stop merging, and specifically with business, you're going to chase businesses out of the, in area entirely, we've got Newter Corporation left the city and moved to Fenton, Hotly Cheese left the city, moved to Fenton. You merge these business development councils, and you're going to send the wrong message to business, and they're going to leave the area completely, I know of two businesses, small businesses personally, that I'm involved in by friends or personally myself, that are looking for area in the county to leave the city. I'm telling them, you better wait and see what's happening, I got one of them looking in Barnhart, so you want to continue to chase business away, then you continue to merge, but I would recommend that you take it into consideration and stop.
All right, thank you. Uh, Teresa Stone, and after Teresa is, is it Lisa, Anna, or Anna?
Thank you for taking my comments. Um, I read the same report that Jennifer is referring to. I'm a forty-plus-year resident of St. Louis County, I grew up in the county, I live in Florissant. Um, there's talk about flight from the, the city to the county, if this goes through, if these businesses join, if the governments join, if the city merger happens, city-county merger happens, you're going to see county flight like you haven't seen before. It's the best interest of the county to stay separate from the city. Um, I ask you do not look like this is going to be merged, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, and after Lisa is Lloyd Sloan.
First of all, I want to state that I'm here on a coalition of churches, which I always represent first and foremost, and within this part that you guys are talking about, the county and the city merging, um, there is merging the sustainability plan within that. And on page one hundred and eleven of the sustainability plan says, celebration of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender questioning lifestyles through St. Louis events and venues and support centers. So in other words, using our tax money to support this agenda. And the churches in St. Louis County are adamantly opposed to this, and want me to speak out against it. Um, there are many other things in the sustainability plan, which, um, I don't understand why you would want to support, such as getting rid of our cars, which are in here, and I think everybody seems to like their cars within St. Louis County, so I'm not understanding why we're wanting to get rid of drive-through facilities in neighborhoods, making those a low priority, and to quote the St. Louis Sustainability Plan, um, which all these are in page numbers, forget the damn car and build the cities for lovers and friends. And I'm not understanding why St. Louis County is participating in getting rid of our cars, um, in a celebration of the gay lifestyle, establishing a cradle-to-college incentives for jobs, why are you wanting to take our children from cradle to grave? I'm not understanding, as a parent, you have children because you want to raise them, not because you want the government to. Um, on page one forty-one, establishing no car zones and outfitting cars with GHG tracking, um, this is also a captain trade program, isn't that for the federal government, not for the local government, to establish a captain trade program? And even on page one hundred and forty-one, it says minimize the use of small engine lawn care equipment, so you're going after our lawn mowers. Um, you want to increase rates for parking, which is on page one hundred and sixty of the St. Louis Sustainability Plan, and allow people to rely primarily on non-car transportation, which is on page one hundred and sixty-two, again, of the St. Louis Sustainability Plan. Um, you want us to establish higher thresholds of energy performance than international standards. Okay, so you want us to be better than everyone else, international, page one hundred and eighty, and what do you think that's going to cost the county? I mean, all these things you're talking about, passive temperature and ventilation control on page one hundred and ninety, that's talking about no air conditioning. Others called forced, that's what that's called, that's called forced temperature control and ventilation, when you have air conditioning. Passive is when you open up the window and hope it cools off. And so my real question is, have you guys even read the sustainability plan? I have, it's right here, and if you have, I'd like to hear some defending of why you're supporting this plan, and all the things I just mentioned with page numbers. Thank you.
Uh, just as a comment, in case anybody was not aware, this county passed an anti-discrimination ordinance, uh, back, when was it passed, did we pass it in the fall?
Uh, yes.
So, uh, you're already living in a county that has an anti-discrimination ordinance. Lloyd Sloan, and after Lloyd is Ray, is it Quittney, Quittney?
Committee.
Sorry.
Lloyd Sloan, from West County. My concern was also, I had lots of questions concerning the bill, that I guess what we voted on tonight, the ordinance, uh, bill one oh three, authorizing, directing the county executive to execute and deliver an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Economic Council of St. Louis County, the SLCEC, the city of St. Louis, the CITY, I'm not sure what that stands for, the St. Louis Development Corporation, SODC, to combine the existing SLCEC and SODC Business Development, Finance, and Entrepreneurial Services, prescribing and performing, proving the form detailed said cooperation agreement, authorizing other related actions in connection with the implementation of said cooperation agreement. I couldn't imagine anything be more clear, so I think my questions are pretty much answered from that. Uh, I don't know if you all have seen another plan, it's from the St. Louis Universal Sustainable Hegemony Plan, a very recent, otherwise known as SLUSH. Uh, their plan I thought was very promising, it was to merge the city and county, of course, then taxing the county and subsidizing the city, I can't imagine anything did more growth to the county than that. But, and also to control all business, uh, making sure they get approval for anything they want to do from government councils such as these. Again, that, that was their plan for increasing economic growth between the city and the county. Uh, it seems clear to me that that plan seems already being incorporated in what I see here that's going to pass tonight, and I, uh, not asking you to necessarily endorse the SLUSH plan, but I think, you know, as long as you don't criticize it in any way, I'll take that as your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ray, and then Tom Sullivan.
Have you talked about the Walmart situation?
You've been talking about one of you, and I, forgive me for mispronouncing your language.
Okay, we're in the act of, 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 power twenty-one, um, I sent everybody a copy of the letter, uh, you should be seeing that coming. Uh, I gave it to the building commission, they said they would get that.
I agree.
Uh, well, I gave it to the panel also on May sixth.
You're talking about the planning commission?
Planning commission, and they said they would make sure that you were given it.
Well, this one we have.
Okay, so, I, I can't go wrong with it because of all the time, but last meeting we had here on May the sixth. Okay, so, I, I can't go wrong because of all the time, but, uh, last meeting we got here on May the sixth, this, uh, the, uh, the, the, the people that were here voted this down, that they would now rent the Walmart, we wanted to keep that a secret area, where, you know, it's a normal, when I say normal business, obviously, eight in the morning till four or five at the beginning. Uh, it's a residential area, the Walmart will bring a tremendous amount of traffic, it will create, have a lot of jobs, and, and we are, we have enough food service industry to handle it for about a year or so. So I just want to, so if you haven't read that, I'd be, I'm sure that it's on the top of my, uh, so, anyway, it's all, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Sir, this evening, that, that mayor was in my district.
Yes.
And, um, there was a recommendation, as you said, we voted down a recommendation of a denial, and this evening I received and filed that denial, which means the denial was sold, so that means it mattered what the, I confirmed, through my proceeding file, I confirmed the denial. So the mayor would be, should be able to.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Tom Solven? And then Tony Grasso?
Madam Chair, members of the council, Bill one thirteen would allow the county to lend up four hundred million dollars of surplus funds to Metro Transit Agency that have been collected from property today. The one hundred percent tax increase in two thousand and ten was never really needed. In two thousand and eight, orders rejected tax for metro despite the usual threats and deception. Prices within manufacture despite Metro receiving record amounts of funding. Service was decreased, so there's no need to do so, except to correct voters. Of course, county executive Charlie Dooley took part in the deception. Voters were told that unless the tax hike passed, the disabled would not have transportation. Workers could not get to their jobs and economic development in the area would be held back. You might recall all the people in wheelchairs that Metro bust into council meetings. Funding really wasn't needed, so much of now being collected that there will be four hundred million dollars of surplus funds that can be loaned. Despite billions of dollars of increased spending on public transportation and nearly twenty years of MetroLink, only a little more than one percent of the population in St. Louis County use public transit to get to their jobs. This council and previous councils have failed for years to provide oversight for Metro. The most obvious example is the cross-county MetroLink, MetroLink extension, the biggest boom dog this area has ever seen. The total cost for taxpayers is one point one billion dollars, nearly one hundred fifty million dollars a mile. I have said for years that the county council needs a full-time person just to audit and report to the council on metro finances and operations. You serve that can't believe the people that run the transit agency. I urge you to include such a position as part of the loan agreement. I would also urge you to be careful in proving agreement unless you fully understand it. It is a complicated financial involvement that could have implications you're not aware of. It should be of concern that the couns, county would not be, that the county would be unable to amend, change, modify, or terminate the loan agreement on its own. All parties would have to be in agreement and would have to be done in compliance of Article ten of the indenture. Do you understand how this would work? In a May sixth letter, the county executive director of administration Pamela Reed says the loan would be made, quote, "with the understanding that loan monies will be returned to the county when federal funding for a new capital program became available." This and other aspects of the loan agreement could use some explaining. It is involved clear that county tax dollars are being protected. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Tony Grasso? And then, Tony, excuse me, just one minute, there were two other people that had signed up to speak for Walmart. Are they still here or did they?
I think they're, I heard they both walked out.
Okay, all right, okay, I'm sorry, Tony.
Could I possibly have one of those slots to speak by chance?
No.
Okay. Even if I'm on my best behavior?
No, we have to sign up before the meeting.
I got stuck in traffic. Six o'clock is tough.
Good evening, Tony Grasso, real estate developer by trade, tax lawyer by training, I have an L of income taxation, I want to continue. First of all, I am in full support of the, uh, the development on Telegraph Road. That is exactly the kind of development we need, and we're going to need a lot more of it. Uh, I'm in full support of everyone's vote on that. However, with that, I think the better location, logistically and real estate tax-wise, would have been the strip of ground that's part of Cliff Cave Road, or Cliff Cave Park that goes out to Telegraph Road. Um, that property, as I understand it, was acquired from our family many years ago for access to Cliff Cave Park, it's never been developed, and, uh, I think that would have been a better location, and it will be a better location for the next development. Um, that's item one. Item two, um, I think I brought a piece of paper, paperwork up to your office, but I want to let you know I get final request for saying it's in St. Louis County in my lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the, uh, comment, introduction of the bill.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Ket, in order to authorize the county executives to accept a grant of two hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars to the City Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, to provide employment and training services to lay off social workers, to pass and incorporate said money to set courses in, and authorizing the county executive to execute this contract, agreements, or other actions. Bill number one seventeen, introduced by Councilmember Wazir, and Lloyd, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with E M K and Gone LLC for consulting engineering services, extended to place in a timely road bridge number two oh six over Maryville Creek, A R dash seven seven. Bill number one eighteen, introduced by Councilmember Erby, in order to authorize the county executive to execute a contract with the curators of the University of Mary St. Louis for installation of lighting on a portion of the Ted Jones Trail. Bill number one nineteen, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, in order to authorize the county executive to execute a contract for the wide design incorporated, releasing five point five one acre tract of land in Woodland's Heart. Bill number one twenty, introduced by Councilmember Brquette, in order to incorporate and save a part of some kind having a two thousand nine thousand dollars in appropriate balance for the general fund for the purchase of a company from various police and community facilities. Bill number one twenty-one, introduced by Councilmember Nolan, in order to authorize the county executive to execute a supplemental contract with Wolf's Lawn Associates Incorporated for additional professional services related to repairs in orphaned and orphaned grounds, St. Louis County Public Works, number twelve, dash zero zero seven, National Station. Madam Chair, that is all of them.
Thank you.
Uh, perfection of bills, Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
Please hold.
So ordered. Bill number one oh three, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
Please hold, and that will be the order.
Bill number one oh eight, introduced by Councilmember Wathner. I move to perfect Bill number one oh eight.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Bill number one oh eight is perfected.
Bill number one oh nine, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Bill number one ten, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
Uh, I move to perfect Bill number one ten.
Second.
Roll call, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Bill number one ten is perfected.
Bill number one eleven, introduced by Councilmember Dowling.
I move to perfect Bill number one eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number one eleven is perfected.
Bill number one twelve, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number one twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number one twelve is perfected.
Bill number one thirteen, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number one thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained. All right, maybe we have a roll call, please. On the motion to perfect Bill number one thirteen, Councilmember Erby? Aye. Councilmember Ket?
Aye.
Councilmember Wathner? Abstained. Councilmember Omera? Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Steiner?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
No.
Madam Chair, on that, uh, vote, there are four ayes, one abstention, one abstent, and one no.
Motion carries, Bill number one thirteen is perfected.
Bill number one fourteen, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
At this time, I move to perfect Bill number one fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries, Bill number one fourteen is perfected.
Bill number one fifteen, introduced by Councilmember Steiner.
I think you said one fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill number one fifteen, introduced by Councilmember Steiner.
I move to perfect Bill number one fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number one fifteen is perfected. Final passage of this?
Bill number one oh five, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
I move for final passage of Bill number one oh five.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Ket?
Aye.
Councilmember Wathner?
Aye.
Councilmember Omera? Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number one oh five, there are six ayes and one abstent.
Bill number one oh five is finally passed.
Bill number one oh six, introduced by Councilmember Ket.
I move for final passage of Bill number one oh six.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Ket?
Aye.
Councilmember Wathner?
Aye.
Councilmember Omera? Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Steiner?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number one oh six, there are six ayes and one abstent.
Uh, Bill number one oh six is finally passed.
Bill number one oh seven, introduced by Councilmember Steiner.
I move for final passage of Bill number one oh seven.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Ket?
Aye.
Councilmember Wathner?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilwoman Steiner?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number one oh seven, there are six ayes and one abstent.
Uh, Bill number one oh seven is finally passed.
Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this evening, and we have no unfinished business, and on the new business, we have one prepared for us. I move to adopt Bill number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
Motion carries, order number one is adopted.
Who will be chair?
All right, let's do this.
Mr. Quinn? Four tornadoes, that's great. I was at hand over you guys, so, yeah, I, um, Dennis Brogdon, I didn't talk with him, I just, I just, I don't know, so, um, for a time, I mean, you need anything professional.
Are you here to talk to someone, sir? We should have talked to him.
Oh, you mean that, uh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, they won't come out unless you've asked, yeah.
We want to talk to Brquette and, uh, Julie.
Mr. Booth, Julie, and Burke.
I was looking, I was looking at your, your bio. You're an M S U student here.
Really?
Did you want to speak?
When did you get me?
Seventy-three. It's up your daughter, you.
Yeah. I have to, I have to talk to you about it, that sounds good.
Okay.